Call the meeting to order, it is seven thirty. At least you say to put a voice in space. I am related to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada's one nation under God. There is all liberty and justice. Oh, yes. Amy, would you do a quick call for us?
Sure, we have Kate Bofalant is here, Megan Wicks is here, Kathy Grant is here, Erica Calwara is here, Valerie is absent, and Sarah Thompson is here, Christopher Wilson is here, and Amy Sappalotto, principal, and Adam Burrows, superintendent.
Thank you. We state the Volontown Board of Education's mission as we do every month. The Volontown Board of Education's mission is to provide our students with skills essential to reach their highest potential and safe environment for learning. They aspire to become responsible, respectful, and civic-minded members of society. We commit to help educate, challenge, and inspire each child to excel as lifelong learners, adapt structurally in an ever-changing, multicultural, technological world. We don't have any guests today, the citizens comments they gave in.
No.
And we have no guests present today besides our wonderful board here. Thank you for all attending and welcome to the the holiday session of this number Volontown Board of Education. Just a brief thank you to everyone, good year, this is the time for I was like going, going and you know it's year end, it's not quite school, school year end, but it's a, it's a calendar year end and it's time to reflect. You know, Amy will talk about the, the awesome young kids' holiday concert, the winter concert was last night and it was just such a joy. Such a joy to, to see the community come together with like Pat, Jen, it was really, really special. One aside sidebar on that briefly is that I have a family friend that was, saw my pictures last year of the kids that were up there and she's like, oh my God, I just and thank you for sharing like, she was going, you know, at the time. So she was just like, you know, I, I just, that's such a wonderful thing to do and he said, I'm gonna, you know, you're gonna be good next year and I'll let you know when it is. So I made a note, set it my calendar and I sent it to us and so the concert is in. You know, I didn't check, but she, then I saw her husband at the concert last night and I was just like, oh, so glad they made it and like she's just like ear to ear and she like came up, I, I didn't even see her, I had to bring me a task, but um, actually my mom was like, that was like the most delightful thing I've ever seen and those kids just brought so much joy and it was like, that's just a piece of the community that I was. That's my side note. Okay, so we can move on to our consent agenda. We have a motion to approve as presented. On favor. Passes. You know, move into the administrative reports. Amy, still your thunder.
We had our concert last night, it was great, it was a full house, usually is, but not one. Mom's data pretty. I mean, the goal does such a great job getting ready, preparing. We had that last night, we'd also started, I went to the store, working with basketball, really, so that's all underway, it's very long season, so we're in the midst of that. It's almost February, so it's been quite a few weeks for practicing right now when they lock out. PTO hosted a movie night during the month, when they, it's a lot of very younger families like did those things because it's not much to do with their kids that isn't their free or maybe like so they'd be asked to jail if they were. It's a mixed. It was a fluffing thing, bring people together, play. So that was great. They did do butter braids. That was for the PTO, which was also awesome because they raised over sixteen hundred dollars to allow our assemblies to come through the PTO, so you know, ten years ago assembly for five hundred dollars and that's not the case now, they will they try to, you know, get them, help them raise money to be able to show up too. When, you know, in the spring, etc. We did do our current flip shop today, which was a lot, Kate can attest, she helped put out sixteen hundred items yesterday in the snowflake shop. I will put the plug in for, for Griffin, Tom Cox's mom, Jen, and his grandma's grandma wrapped all the gifts, she pre-wrapped almost every item.
There was power breaks, yeah, like empty boxes filled with items and all wrapped.
It would be wrapped and then like one was left out so you could see what the item was.
What the end was and then actually wrapping, mapping, and then they get it changed just a little, it was a different color.
It was unbelievable, it was unbelievable, but it made it just goes to my fashion, now we're not saying wrapping, you know, teaching is it like, it takes a lot of time to wrap. So it was great, our middle school kids, you know, they take care of their own, so they just come out, kind of, even like our third and fourth graders, they can need to take care of how they want to do it on their own. To care of that, so thanks to Kate and then all our volunteers who came past a couple days to help get it done. We recently submitted moving down into critical learning, so one of the things we had to submit was a plan for our new teachers and that had been something to kind of dated at our team plan. So basically that just states it through how we support new teacher as they come into the profession, so that we needed an up for your update, so it was fine for that. And one of the things our committee, we put it south, we put it up, we are working on the professional development plan that will be instituted in twenty four, twenty five, so this is kind of a a year for transition for that and that would be for the professional development committee, they'll send a proposal to the board, the board will review it, and then we just want to mutually agree on that plan for teacher evaluation. And so that is something that we are currently working on at this time.
I think that's just about it. Is that the team plan? That's the team plan. Pretty simple, what they ask for from the state is not very complex.
I'd like to thank Amy and her committee on this. It's just an update to inform the boards about the district teacher education mentor.
Maybe one more.
One more.
You want one here, please?
Alright.
And everything that's included in the plan is required by the state, so there are very specific things that they have to before that you have to put in warning as such, so we just followed along all of them. Through that, that process.
I think that's it for me, Kate. Anybody have any questions? Any questions for Amy?
The one thing I got out of Amy's presentation is when you said that activities with parents and children would be well received and I'm going to bring that to the N F U service. Maybe they could do movie nights and things.
Yeah. Parents like that, especially parents with younger kids, because what you do with a five-year-old that, you know, at six or seven o'clock. But they do, they do like that. They have talked about like open gym time, like being able to come in and just being able to play, so just, you know, work out, work supervision, Y S B is always good for that kind of stuff.
Yeah, they, I think screen free when Y S B helps with that.
That's cute, yeah.
That's serious.
Yeah. That's like the same families that come with their young kids.
Y S B is fantastic and it's.
And I think next week, Y S B, I said, nobody in school would go home, I'm not very good at it, you know, it's basketball and it's two Y S B movies where there's like seventy kids and you say, I said, we might go to the back, everybody on. There's no bus, why I'm going to run buses because everybody's that beautiful in school. Those are people with a five o'clock because it's so popular, you know, and it's fun, they want to do the things with this barber and they want to support in this age, so.
Oh, that was, yeah.
Oh, yeah. They, they got me, they're like, said it first, slip back.
So true.
That's a very big thank you to the, the the Y S B folks and the, the teachers obviously that put on.
Yes, she does.
I think one of the other things that you should just know as a board is that during Christmas time we work with the town hall and there is a train in the town hall that is posted, those are families that are in need, that do come from your school community, so I work with the town hall and you put the gift card like in the tree, I heard. Yeah, so like there's different ways and then there's some tags for people, so the tree is still kind of full, so I've been trying to prompt people if they go down that, because I, I know, yeah. I go down to the tree, I've got staff, like if you'd like to give you know, for people in need within the community, it's senior citizens, it's kids, it's families, it's adults, it's, you know, control. It's still pretty full.
About the town hall?
I believe, I have last Facebook, what they don't trade, they don't. You know. I don't know how many people stop in there all the time.
Around the front door, I've been down, down that, I know. It's in the meeting.
Yeah, it's all got up on the side.
Yeah.
If I can save the day. I'm saying, how are we getting?
Well, thank you for that plug, that is such a great thing.
Yeah, it's more people knew about it, you said, you know, you look for somebody to help in the time of need or you know.
I know last year I did it, I did a gift card, I wanted to like get actual likes and stuff, you know, and it was like the only thing I had left was the gift cards, but it was, maybe it just was.
I think if you go early enough, they're definitely.
But it's a great, great thing for the community. Any other topics for Stappel? Thank you very much. Do you have a report or a?
Director of Student Services is a written report with you. If you look at the numbers for the, for the I E Ps, we had fifty-three as of today. On October first, we had fifty-two and a year ago on October first, we had fifty-four. And then in the five oh four, we have forty-five students, this is three K through twelve as of today. At the first of October was fifty-four, so it's, excuse me, yeah, fifty-four, we've had some decreases in that and then the year before we had forty-six. Lloyd explains some of the things that he's doing. He will be here at the next meeting when we present the budget.
Thank you. Mr. Burrows.
Yes, I, you have my calendar of events. I am not going to go over every one of the reports I shared with you. I did want to bring it up that we've been working quite diligently with Karma, our insurance agency, and they have brought somebody on board who has been guiding the process to securing cyber insurance. And I thought we were going to be challenged with a, you know, very high premium policy. But they sent it out, they had three quotes, the highest one was nine thousand nine hundred eighty-eight for a million dollars worth of coverage. And then another company quoted five thousand eight hundred and forty for three million and also three thousand four hundred ninety for one million. Mike and I and the, you know, people that worked on this really are signing a contract for the three million dollar policy. And I just wanted to make sure you know, as we go through the initial policy, there's a number of things that you have to submit and if the tech committee goes through and identifies things that we have to improve, that may help with actually reducing future premiums. But I was hoping that we could get under ten thousand dollars for a premium. And we, we wrap this up. Karma was very, very helpful, they had a resource person. We had to fill out multiple pages of applications that they were reviewed by companies, but we do have cyber insurance now. Amy, on the, on the committee, I, you know, I think if you want to move along, I know you've been very busy. It's up to you if you want to stay.
Do you need me for anything else?
What was that?
Do you need me for anything else on here?
Which, which one are you talking about?
No, any of them. Do you need me for any of them? They're getting straight forward. I think we're okay.
I think the, the thing with the personnel, I'm just going through with you know, the, you know, the placement, the retirement. And I'm gonna inform the board about the leave of absence for a month.
Yep.
To get it in the record and then the, you know, the, you know, the other one that we have, that's it. I think that we're all okay. And then next, next meeting, Amy will be here for the full thing as we go through the budget and staffing and other types of things. And yes, she's been very, very busy, so thank you.
All right, Amy.
Take your chocolate.
Another holiday concert, we could spend another Wednesday. Four to eight, I'm, I'm, I mean, a great four to eight.
Take your chocolate. Listening. Don't forget your chocolate.
Well, thank you. Moving to old business, we've got the budget preparation timeline for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yes, and we're, we're into the timeline and for today, we have projected budget costs for transportation and maintenance. And I gave you a sixteen-year summary of our maintenance and transportation and the trends that are happening. As I wanted to, you know, just point out to you the the, the maintenance budget, let me get my paper here. The average for the sixteen, the sixteen years was four hundred and twenty-five thousand. But as you see, projected for next year, we have four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. And then up above, projected for next year, it's five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and the average is four hundred and sixty-two. You can see that, you know, maintenance is running higher than the average. We have an older building, but look, we're playing the roller coaster ride. This is my first run-through. And I have to tell you, the maintenance and the transportation, the reason I wanted to talk to you about it is that we have this capital improvement plan and we have things with maintenance that are in the capital improvement plan. And Kate is on that committee and there's other people, but we're developing an R F P for the H VAC, for the gym. We have other things that I showed you at the last meeting about the capital improvement plan. What goes into requesting a special allocation for the town to do something like the generator, that's, you know, that needs to be replaced, that's not in the budget and that could be sixty, seventy thousand dollars when we ask the town to make a special allocation. So over the next three or four months, we're gonna have to work with a selectmen to see what happens.
Gym door fall. Is that falling in?
No, that's, that's capital, that's a hundred and twenty thousand, that's, there's no way that we could handle this in the budget. So we've got about five hundred thousand dollars that's out there to be reviewed by the town. And, you know, like the asbestos is, this money set aside for that. So as we go through this process, we'll see what we can do on the operating button. But there's been the fire panel, the fire alarm panel, Jody was in the other day and he said, you have to replace that. So the, the door is a hundred and twenty, the generator is about seventy, the fire plant, you know, panel is about sixty. Do we ask the town to do a special allocation? They have the money in the fund balance. Or do we wind up taking out a loan and paying for it through the, you know, through the school budget? With transportation, the big outstanding thing is we need a handicap van, we, in addition to the one we have. We have some students that are coming in that require, you know, handicapped. And the thing is that we don't want that child isolated, so we want to get a van that can, you know, also include some other students. And the quotes that we're getting are around ninety thousand for that, that's not in the budget. So I just wanted to let you know, we're doing, we're doing the roller coaster ride again. And there, there are some little, little helpful things that are happening. The high school tuition in my initial run-through appear to be flat. The special ed tuition as of this point is about a sixty thousand dollar increase. And please remember, they passed that unfunded mandate, we have to we have to educate students now up to age twenty-two. So.
Did you say that you were initially anticipating a hundred thousand dollar savings on the high school? And now you're saying.
That's, you know, that, that's why, that's why the high school tuition is flat. So we, you know, that's with N F A, so we had the savings at N F A that offset the overall increase, Megan.
Were high school budgets, high school.
The high school tuition. For, you know, the high school tuition for this year approved was one million thirty-six thousand, projected for next year. It's, there's a little bit of a savings, it's like minus seven thousand. So it's flat, so the, the, the tuition, because we've had some increases in, in tuition.
That thing wasn't like a hundred thousand?
Yes, it is, but we had some increases in other areas of the tuition. When I was talking about that, I was talking about N F A.
Okay.
You know, because N F A, N F A, this year, this year with N F A, we have an enrollment of, projected enrollment of thirty-five students. And the ten-one census was thirty-eight students. And that's about eight to ten students less than we had the previous year. So any savings went into tuition increases in Griswold, Wheeler, and the other high schools.
So the tuitions from the other schools ate up like a hundred thousand?
Not all the hundred thousand. Yeah, not all the hundred thousand, but, you know, but it is, the tuition is flat. And a little later, we'll talk about the contract with N F A, because we've been working on that. But, you know, if, if, if I misled you, I'm sorry, it's. Yeah, that was the you know, and that's why we're in discussions with N F A because it's not consistent. Wheeler, Wheeler has.
You know what I mean, so that's.
Oh, there's no question about it, yeah, but we, we have had some, you know, increases in enrollment, you know, with you know, a little bit more than anticipated with N F A, so that was helpful. Let's see. I'll have more information, of course, at the next meeting because the students are still choosing their high schools and we don't confirm that until probably the March meeting, so that's the, that's the roller coaster ride that's, that's happening. Those are just a couple of the areas that I, I wanted to mention to the board. And then, as I said, you get the initial budget proposal in January.
Is there any questions about the transportation or maintenance as an outline here? This is helpful, just to see it in the rears and Chris will definitely get you that copy of the, the six-year.
I did.
Back.
Alright, Howard.
Okay. All right, let's, let's roll on here for old business. The federal and state grants, I think, are pretty standard.
The only, just earlier today, I got approval. Final approval for that mental health grant for the social worker.
It's good.
They changed the rules. They, they sent me a note and they said, this is approved. And then they sent us a note and they said, you have to do these eight things. I had two other superintendents call me and say, Adam, what are they doing, you know, three years of this? You know, certification for this, there's some new requirements that came in after the fact, so we had to stop everything, rewrite explanations and do things to hang on to this grant, it's sixty-seven thousand dollars, the twenty-five, twenty-five, and seventeen. Oh, by the way, we have a wonderful social worker that we're sharing with Preston. She's here one day a week and if Amy were here, she would say it's a great addition to the staff. That's what the grant is paying for, okay? So I, I couldn't believe it, you know, oh, you're approved, oh, wait a minute, send in all this other paperwork and now they said we're okay. I'm not gonna hold my breath because they're probably gonna ask me for ten more pages or something next week. It's an interesting roller coaster ride.
Okay. Can we move to the building committee?
I think we just summarized that, unless there's any questions. But, you know, the committee is working. I will tell you that the town hall is, is helping guide the H VAC grant and following the R F P procedures for that. Julie Zalinski, you know, Darlena, you know, Casers on that, that committee, Jack Wester. They've been going through and of course Tracy's been helpful too. So Will and Brian Calio will meet, will have workshops to show where the things are located in the specs. And we do have the engineering specs already done. So, you know, we're just in the finals, hopefully in the final stages, and if we can get three quotes, we could sign a contract as quickly as possible.
Any other questions? Moving to the N F A contract update. I'm sorry, professional, not, not related, I'm gonna talk about kind of the town hall, so what is the status of the blinking lights out on one thirty-eight?
Didn't have a chance to check with Tracy.
Can you, can we get an update on that and also like who they've reached out to because I'd like to also have a citizen reach out.
Oh, and you know, it's funny, I, I talked to Brian Lenu about this too, it, it's like it goes into the D O T and it's like lost in space, I, I mean.
Hope that Tracy's calling or maybe you can call on behalf of the school.
Yes, you know, but I, I did have, you know, I, I did have a conversation with Brian Lenu and he, you know, he was gonna check, but I haven't checked back with him. And we'll see what happens, but, he puts that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Government bureaucracy, no sense of purchase, so we don't need it.
We might, we might want to invite Tracy.
Tracy submitted you because there's like an office of.
It's just the ticket man, we have to kind of.
The citizens are on, and that's something we use the P T O for to talk to their memories about making the phone. Emails.
Yeah, I think we just need to find out.
Something more than D and T.
Yeah. If you want to see how it will look, just look at Preston Burton, run up there, there, I'm interested, that's sort of imagining, that's from the specs that we got. Yep. And I do see it like getting certain. Yeah.
Building a school in a state highway has its challenges.
Yeah. I know, I just hope that, you know, we're being those things about following up and.
Oh, and, and, yes, I, I wrote a little note and I, I, I wanted to explain town hall is putting in two charging stations. And the library is putting in two charging stations. And I was surprised, they just told me that because I shared that legal advice with you at the last meeting. And, you know, do we want to have a charging station here at school? Yes, I still have my reservations. So, you know, you know, what is our obligation and what's happening because this would take a parking lot room? It may interfere with arrival and dismissal, with safety with buses.
I would say they don't have to be out back here.
And, and the location needed to be. And, and the location needed to be as close to an electrical service out front.
Yeah, I just don't think we want to encourage people that don't have a reason to be at the school to be at the school for any amount of time.
To me, it's kids who put in a gas pump in the school parking lot, why would you do that?
My gosh, really, literally. Uh, you can just put a, a note that's saying that, uh, there would be, uh, you know, it was felt there was to be some complications with adding, uh, you know, a charging station to, uh, some areas constantly utilized by students. In fact, they stay.
Yeah. Not in, um, food.
Yep.
Yeah, unless we have, like, a need for a bus, like, there's.
And that would be in the bus garage, on the fence. Right?
Getting into town, right?
Right, yeah.
Right, so I mean.
Yeah, we support them, so we, yeah, like, a little area.
Kids along.
Yeah, that's why it starts to get a little.
You're that. The library is doing that too, uh, maybe they're. It's.
I know, I. I thought after reading that legal brief that they weren't gonna do it. Well, anyway.
Now, Nana, like that.
He, I've been meeting with the partner school district, you know, the partner districts, and of course. You know, I, I had Dan Murphy, our attorney, review the contract. And I brought that into the committee and they reviewed it. Uh, you know, there was a meeting on Tuesday, and now that group is submitting it to Shippin and Goodman. Uh, they're, you know, they're a company that, you know, uh, works with a lot of school districts. Uh, because Volantown made a contribution, uh, they're not gonna shit, they don't, they, they said, we don't have to share any expense. With Shippin and Goodman, which would be the final thing. I have a draft of the contract, I, I'm, you know, I'm not sure what the thing is, if the board wants to, you know, look at it, but this is something that, uh, may or may not be, uh, you know, confidential. I don't think.
What change is in it?
Oh, they're all listed.
A lot of it.
You know, so, uh, but here's, here's the scenario. Uh, Shippin and Goodman will review that, it will come back to the committee. And then we will have representatives, and we're in agreement with the changes that we're making. And, uh, we'll give that and they'll negotiate with the, uh, NFA board. And then come back and have one final look. When I talked to Dan, uh, he said, uh, you know, yeah, send me the final copy, I'll give it a review for the board. And if it looks okay, then I'll let them know that, uh, you know, this is in compliance. Uh, I don't know if anybody wants to take a copy of the draft.
Well, we have an agreement more along the lines of what we have with Wheeler, if it's more fair and.
Well, that's, that's my bottom line, I'm not sure that we're gonna get that with NFA. Uh, but, uh, you know, Wheeler was very, very good. And I think, uh, as I'll repeat it again, best contract, worked it out. We pay for the days that the kids are there, and if they leave, that's it, we don't have to pay another penny. It's very equitable, it's fair, and, uh, it offers us some consistency with budgeting. And then Griswold, as you know, you have two kids leave after October first, they save, uh, two spots. And then, no, you have one kid leave, they save one spot. But if you have two kids come in with only twenty-five days, one gets free, and we have to pay for the other. So we get fifty days, but yet we paid for a hundred and fifty. So, you know, that's just our, and that's with the town of Griswold, it's not the Board of Education. But we've been getting some successes with, uh, some of the special ed services at Griswold, and that's been helpful. So.
Well, we always get an update kind of each month on where that stands, but it's gonna probably be a longer process, so. Thank you for your work with that. Moving to committee assignments. I think we, um, in, in the packet, there was just a kind of a final approved committee assignments, if there's. Um, any questions about where you're involved, if you want to add yourself, that would be fine.
With the, uh, committee assignments. The vigor committee, a little later, you're gonna be going over the wellness policy. And they have so many, uh, audits on the, uh, wellness and nutrition program. That we have to document when the board is reviewing policies and updating them. So that's one of the things that the board is participating with wellness. But I'm, I'm looking at doing a summary report on the committees. The transportation, the indoor air quality maintenance, the, and the, uh, wellness. And, uh, you know, those are commit, those are reports that we produce annually to document that we're in compliance with standards.
Okay, now you have it in here.
So, uh, it's on the back of the calendar.
Yeah.
Time below, and maybe, you know, notarize it, and you'll show. Okay. There's no further changes there, we're good on committee assignments. Um, item number six of old business, uh, getting into some of the policy work. Policy five-one, three-one-spot-eight-one is the cell phone and electronic communication device, devices, it's our second reading. Um, I believe Amy was able to kind of be able to rock reference that, right?
She had a couple edit things in here that's already included in this version.
You could heard things that we were discussing from the cover meeting.
Yeah, I'd let her know.
There'd be cellular phones, electronic communication devices, continued heading on the second page. It says each school, it should probably say the school.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, the only other, I, I appreciate the team that she put in here, I think that covers most of my concerns. The only other concern I have is the, uh, was the line of. Uh, if the, if the device is confiscated for violation of the district policy, then our contributors, the district and its employees shall not be responsible for safekeeping loss or damage.
Right.
Yeah, I mean.
Amy wanted to keep that in there, she, because they're not responsible.
And they already be damaged when they come.
Yeah. Yeah.
We don't wanna be responsible for that.
Perspective is if you keep, I hope you're responsible for the safety. The law for damage, I can kind of understand, but you should keep it somewhere, not lose it.
Monitor at least.
Right, so maybe if we, and we, I, I understand the perspective of it, we don't wanna get into, it would already be damaged, or so now we have.
No.
But there, I feel like there.
Maybe safekeeping is the, the problem.
There needs to be a, right, there needs to be.
Okay. Why don't we just ma- make it, um, you know, something that will work, spend that to get that. Safekeeping out of that, though they do.
Yeah, something about it will monitor, you know, there are.
Back with that, um, as edited, do you have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
On paper.
All right.
Opposed.
Can you just send that to me, Dee Dee wants to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Motion passes. All right, now I'm getting into my, my packet, and then I can use my agenda. Um, I then may have to go on to the, uh, survey of, of students policy six-one, six-two, spot five-one. That is the instruction for the survey, you know, students that. Some thoughts on that, but I have to leave that last, um, Dee Dee.
The survey?
Table it, or was there, who's gonna go back and?
I think it was just tabled, because people were tired. I'm, you know, no.
In value.
There's several forms. There's just several forms at the end of the policy. Again, these forms are generated, they're general ones from CADE. Um.
When you read all the exceptions, there's just really no reason to do a survey. Taxpayers' money, where are you going to gain from?
Yeah, there was a feeling that there was, we had flip-flop, right, of. Opt-in versus.
It seems like a pointless exercise.
Talk about opting out, yes.
You don't opt out, yes, you, you're already.
But I think this one had, like, certain areas where you would opt, you have to get consent, and then certain areas where you would opt out.
And we think you don't set into anything, you're in everything until you opt out, that, that's, that's the.
But it's something about like the.
Yeah. Yeah, where it was flip-flop.
Right, so like, I mean, for number, I think it's. That continues. So there's an example of this at-risk ABC survey of at-risk behaviors.
Mm-hmm.
Said this would be a consent, so a parent must sign and return a valid consent form no later than next date. And then an example of opt-out was like a flu shot, but actually, that's correct. Where you would have to opt, so we thought that actually was like.
Well, it's not really.
Be actually more part of that than something.
Yeah, well, it depends on. If you're coming with a tier-two intervention, if you're doing a tier-two. Or tier-three intervention.
Who does that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking school, though I'm in the school world, so under SRVI or MTSS. Um, multi-system, some place here to support, where it's like, where you're addressing a student need, like, tier-one is everybody, tier-two is smaller group, tier-three is individual. And emotional education is the triangle. So when we're doing right now, we're rolling out some tier-two groups that we've identified. But best practice that we get consent from the parent with a letter saying, hey, we'd like to include your child in social skills group, or a emotional management group, or a friendship group of some sort. And that's when I would, that had best practices to gain, the parent know.
Right, it's like a flu shot.
Where you could kind of selected, yeah, that would be. An option.
But you don't go with all the, if it's number one, or number two, or number three, you're not picking all, or number four.
Well, I think the question, I think, I think the question was. I think the question was.
You don't pick them all.
Um, the models, the differences, you, you pick form one, form two, or form three, or form four. Alternate B four.
Okay. You think. So these are in our toolbox and, and at least, as it, okay, it's whatever server we're doing, then we put it, we use.
Well, I think we were kind of hoping, I think the confusion, or not confusion, but like, the concern is, how do you pick one when it's not one size fits all? So, I mean, I would, I would agree, something like academic, like, do I want my child to participate in this movie or whatever? I, I think that makes sense for an opt-out, right? We assume you're gonna participate until your parent tells otherwise, or if it's like a flu shot, like, would not be an opt-out. So how do you write that in the policy, is, I think, kind of, I'm interested.
Well, current is form one, or current is form B, there's the. Alternative form A and B, you look at, you pick one or the other as what you want to be actually. It's kind of creating, well, alternative what A, and alternative B, oh, there's pretty much everything.
Or you can just say scrap all the forms, just keep the policy. Or you could just scrap the forms and keep the policy.
Well, we want some, no.
Something.
If something.
Cause the teachers usually write their own anyways.
But if you pick A, it's just you opt out, or B, you're opt-in.
So the way the policy is written, we have to get consent to submit to the survey. That it has political affiliation with mental or psychological problems, some behaviors, illegal, antisocial, you're fearful, afraid of, or other.
Right.
We refer to them, privileged relationships, or lack of productive income. So we have to get consent proportions are required to submit to a survey that makes sense.
How many parents would even want this? Realistically, how many parents want their K through eight students answering questions about income, religion, sexual behavior? And this is just ridiculous, that we would even spend time discussing this sort of thing, right? It's, I understand it's policy and it's put on us by the government, that this is, this thing, this is just ridiculous.
We have this policy right now.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a required one, I, I don't have that list with me, but. Pretty sure it is.
And even flu shots, you, you send out permission slips for.
Could we? Eagle, this, you know, Kate and I can work on it, like, the policy committee, and you can bring it back to, like, the January, February.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's too much, it's too much.
Yeah, that's.
And I, I was, yeah, it's more like.
That should be an opt-in.
Correct.
So, we'll just, we'll get together and write what we need to.
Policy itself, I think, I think it's trying to encompass way too much under one small.
I, um, and that's, I'm trying to think of it practically where I've seen it, like, and it was, uh, through, like, high school stuff, and it's like, they're like, this particular outside service group, like, that's like. You know, college, yeah, but this was like about, like, so- social services, it was definitely like, uh, um, you know, your picture. Yeah, like, they're, they were just gonna do a survey of, you know, and they wanted to, the best, give you an option to consent. And I was like, oh, I'm getting some options, you know, or whatever, but it was, um, it was definitely, I think, they were going to gain from the students, like, either. Yes, that's what kills. And they were gonna gain, so there was some outside.
And that's the first I'm talking about, that, gain from that. Or various reasons, not just various reasons to have.
But that's, it gave me a clear example of something that was like not, like, nothing part of the actual school system that was trying to survey kids, it was like outside vendor that was trying to get information.
I'll look up some other schools, samples too, and send it to you guys.
All right, this right now is that we send home consent forms for things like the eye screen, um, vision screen training, right, and so I think. Yeah, this, you just have to. All right, that's a good one, good choice, we're gonna table for next meeting, we'll, we'll revisit it. February's meeting.
Yeah, I think.
We'll be working on this till June.
One person at a time, please.
Moving on.
Okay, well, um, now we can move on to new business, so these are all policies that we have not yet seen first readings, and we know those can be, um. Move along quickly or can be tabled for the next meeting, so.
This is all, you know, this is related to the uh wellness policy and. The annual review, but uh this, it's pretty detailed and but this is uh, you know, required stuff for a, for a three-year audit. And the work that you do now will be verified in the audit in two thousand twenty-five.
The first one is policy three, four, three, five, four, two, spot four, two, the food services.
That's, yeah, that was a simple one, what fund, what money, what the money goes into.
First sentence.
Which policy you, they were talking, they're talking about the very first. Are you at wellness and. Yeah, sorry.
Oh, okay, okay, I missed that. Yeah, okay, I'm not crazy, yes. Yes, you know, it's one page, yeah.
Yes, yeah, first one, four, two. Motion passes. Now we are talking about three, five, four, two, spot four, three.
Yes, yes.
Third bullet under.
Third, well, the students.
That the students will be reminded by the cashier when they owe meals. We can leave the, you know, in that this process will occur when every student count is negative. And then just leave notices, we'll go home with the last on looks, we do this one more than.
Just that first sentence, uh, two sentences, notices, we'll go home, leave that. On page, on page B.
But is thirty meals, is that where?
The the state just changed it, it used to be three, but they upped it to thirty about a year or two ago.
That the state or?
That was, it went through. It's, it was, yeah, that change was done in two thousand eighteen.
So you just.
That's, it went from three to thirty.
Yeah, or just.
They changed.
Getting lunch and I'm sending in the lunch with them, I would like to know before you wrap something.
I don't know, I can check. I mean, as far as like when they get a reminder, you could add a sentence about. With reminders at ten. But this, this had to do.
So maybe the requirement is at thirty.
Because so many students.
Give them, we can like go above and beyond that and do something at ten and.
I think would be reasonable. That's two weeks.
I think they were trying to allow students to charge more than just three. It was that, that's the reason, yeah. But notice, the notices, we can change, yeah. They're allowed up to thirty, but notices.
To everybody. Could identify a student that would eat up and use scholarships, whatever else available to.
On the second bullet, do we know if we have students charging more than one meal per day? I was tracked, I mean, or do we just know, is that, is this a problem? Is that why we're putting that in there?
They can all buy one, because sometimes Frankie wants to buy two and they don't.
They're trying, they're trying to add that in there, that they can only buy one. But I think it's, I think the issue is that it's breakfast and lunch.
So like, we're free, so for breakfast.
You know, students can only charge one meal per day during their meal serve, right, we shouldn't, so I I read that to say you can charge one for breakfast and one for lunch. We charge for breakfast. I guess I'm just curious if this is a. If it was just a, if it's a big, if we have a lot of kids trying to get multiple meals. Is that why we're putting this in here?
Tom, uh, these were Tom's, Tom's changes, but and what he has at Griswold.
Yeah, that, I mean, it would just be, I wouldn't want to deny somebody that eats both breakfast and a meal.
Because I know Frankie sometimes goes, they want one way to get two lunches. And he goes, and he said, you know, I said, no, one lunch is enough.
So they're just saying, not more than two breakfasts, not more than two lunch.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, but you can't get two, need two.
Or one breakfast per day and one lunch per day.
Can make it more clear.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's not one or the other.
Anything else on this, or do we want to table it for the next one for final?
Let's see the change, just to confirm, so the bullets that are italicized, crossed out are not gonna be in there.
The ones that are crossed out are Tom's removing and putting in his, the other wording.
I think so, we'll make some changes and then um see it next, next again and hopefully in a thinner form and get those changes made and. Okay, so policy and regulations four, one, 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 spot one.
This one is, okay, the four, one, one, one.
This one, I was just updating what we had because it was literally from nineteen ninety in the book, there's so many from nineteen ninety then.
This is the standard language.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to. Bring us up to date.
We have, we have an affirmative action person and and that committee, uh, you know, it's Amy and.
Let's see, up to date, yeah, that's the regulation, we should have the up-to-date regular. Do we have a motion to?
Motion.
Second. On paper. Okay, so we have wellness, wellness as well, this one, one, two, uh, one, oh. So this is, this has been part of our, um, yeah, our line review or policy.
There's no changes to this policy, it's just a review, because it's annually required for the board and other committee to go over.
Yeah, we just keep this.
Suggestions for creative and fun things to do.
It's interesting how it says that school launch out of minimum will meet so many requirements. And two policies up the second paragraph, I hate them, it was crossed out, except for the words, child nutrition is a local decision. Here we are.
Well, we got rid of a lot of the beans and stuff that they would.
What we weren't eating. We split it into the trash.
I know wellness policy, it said that schools will work towards providing sixty minutes of physical activity daily. And how is that implemented within some of the other. Isn't it twenty?
Twenty, that's the minimum. Which I think we should be more, but. I think it's not like just recess, though, it's, it's like.
Walking through the hall.
It's optimization as well.
So let's be clear about that too, but. I mean, I just think if we're saying in our policy that we're providing sixty minutes of physical activity. That we should be looking at how we're, where is that, right? That is on page A, last bullet. Under the section, better goals for physical activity.
Yeah, working tools.
Provides the working force, we are like a two-thirds short of what we're doing.
It gets no recess. When we did this, these meant that we required this of the.
Yeah, what she's saying is we're at the, we're at like the bare minimum, do we want to be?
There's a philosopher related to this. When I did the survey online with the three consultants. The philosophy was, we want you to write down as much as you can. About what you're supposed to do for wellness, and that way we know that you're required to do it. If we had a two-hundred-page policy, they would want four hundred, I'll see. So rather than having the minimum, this is a lengthy policy. And if we added another, if we doubled the pages, they would love that even more. Because they wanna know that we've written down that we're gonna do this.
I think that's, that makes sense, it's just more like we have it in the policy that we're working towards, but so we just need to find a way to either. Or if he is a, a district, don't. Want to say we're working towards it, that we're, we're going to just require minimums and. And it's a district, they're just going to, you know, build it as we exceed fit or like the kids need it.
About, like each a school, walking to school, if they want things like that, if it's safe. The amount of distance they walk to the bus stop counts, all that counts, I would say all of the grant, whatever's with this.
Yeah, but it, it does help if you have written it down when you're applying for grants, because then you can show. That it might be in the policy and I've had to go back and, you know, add some things in because of that, it's an interesting. It's an interesting scenario, but uh they really spent a lot of time reviewing this policy. So then there is that three-year, five-year audit that we have to do, and they go over this line by line.
And when they go over the instructional minutes, they go line by line, they take out every minute of. The gym and all.
To check off that yes, it's in the policy.
Junior high kids have no recess?
They have a twenty-minute.
Do they go outside?
Like Kelly Junior has no recess. If you're junior high, you're not required to be. Because we're K through eight, we have to offer recess.
I think my point on it is that we say that we are working towards sixty minutes of. Physical activity daily for students, and I think we are long short of that goal, way short of that goal, particularly when you're. I think there are studies that show that physical activity and recess are helpful for students. And I think particularly in those grades, that we should just, the point is that we should consider how to increase physical activity minutes. In our rare grades.
That would cost a hell of a lot of taxpayers money. We're already over attached.
Please, please note, uh, when I was down at the uh middle school in East Line. A standalone middle school does not have to have recess, they have the lunch. And they have more instructional time, because we're in a pre-K through eighth grade school, we have to have recess, so. Yes, uh, there, there's some dynamics to this, because we had a schedule worked out. And we were following a schedule similar to a standalone middle school. And mid-year, they came out with this requirement, and we had to change our master schedule to meet that recess requirement. Yes, the other thing is that, and I've been in schools where the students got two gym periods a week. For physical activity, uh, that would require us to add staff, we have, you know, one, uh, you know, PE class. And the teacher also works with teaching health, so it's a, it's an interesting dynamic that we're faced with.
But I guess we, I know a lot of teachers do utilize walks in state forests that are still going on.
Yeah, and they talk about breaks, it breaks of walking in the halls, they come those minutes.
Well, yeah, for contract, I advise, yeah, that's practice is not, not, no. Uh, and research goes against what the best practice.
Yeah, it's available to have fifteen minutes of. Time on to the school day and the negotiations, that what was fifty grand to do that.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if maybe like, we could approach it from the perspective of like, we have the pavilion now, so maybe. In the spring, could we maybe? Talk to Amy about students have, you know, one or two classes a week out of the pavilion, like they're getting outside. They're getting, they're walking out to the pavilion, they're getting fresh air, they're getting. Maybe we should, like, research is.
Right, because like, we could approach it.
He talked about that, but I would not.
No, that's, that's literally what he just said, like, in the spring, maybe you can talk to her about. That to me would be a stride in the right direction, right, about these guys.
Walking, I know in the class, they, they have, I think this is a COVID thing, but they continued it, is they earn, it's an earning thing, but they earn. Walks, like ten minute. That, at the front, the earning thing is we, is what they're doing, the donkeys, not, not the.
Physical activity minutes.
I just don't think that we can approve a policy that says we're providing sixty minutes when we.
I like the motion.
It's, 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 it's not motion, because.
Yeah, I mean, I can just revise the sixty, but can you revise?
It's not revised, this is.
It's.
No, before like what Nick said, you had to have to get some money from the grant, word over, you did it last year, one year ago. No, before like what Nick said, you had to have to get some money from the brand, word over, you did it last year, one year ago. Look at the date, on your, I'll try to get your. They will only get about fifty thousand, and that's so. He doesn't want that.
What's on N or which, which one is it on?
Um, it's tools working towards sixty minutes.
On the first.
Page K. And I'm in case.
They are working towards it, they constantly take from outside and move in.
Alright, I think what we should do is just, we're gonna table this one for a moment, I I just wanna clarify, but not one meeting. I think it makes sense that. I know, excellent, there's been a lot of work, it's pretty. Alright, but they weren't this word, some of the ones where they were doing, we haven't looked at for twenty.
I think first, yeah, we need to make sure that. Before we do that, that there's not a second motion, right, is that like a meeting?
This?
Yeah.
I.
We can discuss after we have, if we do have a second, discuss it, and then maybe.
Yeah.
So it can always be changed next month, you know, it can have revisions. It can have revisions in it.
Good with tables.
We have twenty, we need a minimum, toward you towards sixty.
We're at about forty a day, so we're about forty a day, we come all the time between classrooms, we have the recess. It uh on gym time. We're about forty, about forty minutes.
So they got a long, without a second.
How much gym is outside, is most of it in the gym itself, or do they go outside, it's lower than that?
And in the upper grades, they don't have gym every, you know, they have like once a week, so.
They get twenty minutes to go outside a day, it is.
Yeah. Chris, when you count these minutes, you're coming, walking in the halls from room to room. You're coming before and after school activity, they count what Y S B time. Projects like that, the movie time, all that time discounted into these minutes.
I'm fine with the twenty minutes.
Yeah.
As long as the kids are actually, like, going outside and getting some meaningful, yeah, taking.
And everyone think of it about how to speak that language, you know, based on.
It's uh, it's it's, it's actually ninety hours of instructional time a year. When I was in the middle school, a standalone middle school did not have to have a thirty minute recess. So that was a hundred and eighty days times a half hour, that's ninety hours of instruction. We are in a pre-K through eighth grade school, we are not allowed to have that half hour. So another school district gets ninety hours more instructional time. And this is what we're up against with the balance, so we're trying to balance that, because we're in. You know, sometimes in comparison to other other school districts, we spent a lot of time in this in the past. And I will tell you, it it, we had a schedule worked out, then they came out with this pre-K through eighth grade requirement. And we did, we had to mid-year rebuild the entire master schedule. To make sure that we could get more physical activity time for the students in the middle school.
Was there a cost to that, did it affect the budget?
Um.
That's when we can increase the minutes of school.
No, the staff is here, Chris, it wasn't a cost, but uh I do believe. Uh there may have been a cost with instructional opportunities for students. Where somebody over at Griswold in the middle school gets ninety hours more instructional time per year. It's an interesting concept.
Well, instructional hours, because of the, and that's when we had to move the time to three twenty, it used to be three oh five. So in the contract, we had increased this school day, to increase this school day. We had increased it anymore.
And I I mean, I I don't know how else to explain it, but uh, you know. And and we did, we negotiated uh twenty minutes more per day. Uh for the teachers to stay here, we implemented the schedule, that mid-year, they came out with this ruling. And we had to, you know, redefine the whole master schedule with ninety hours a year less instructional time. It's an, it's just an interesting viewpoint for this.
Says before and after school, so if they go out and they're down there on Constitution Field, bouncing a basketball at three thirty, that counts. The F B D Y S B counts, all those things count.
Well, it's just very interesting that the color that we're we're leaning from this is so. Like, unobvious in the way this is.
She's here and she can give us an idea of all of the things that they're incorporating in the much more effective conversation.
Well, I don't know if, you know, she.
No, that's about, she'll know what her faculty is doing now, right, that Mr. Duncan does this, and Miss.
So you can have all the hours of basketball practice. And you spread it all.
It has to be early instructional today. Yeah.
Before and after.
But I don't think, like, we should be claiming kids who are deciding to organize.
Execution will be on on one word. And we'll move to next time, that's fine. And lose the fifty grand, maybe, with your words.
This is a very interesting topic, it's really is.
You need this policy to submit for right now?
Well, we've been, we're gonna spend some time doing this. You asked us to review the physical activity time, and uh that's gonna get interesting too, because. Uh there's a lot of involvement in this. It it's an, it's an inequitable system set up in the state. Because, you know.
But yes, it was lots of hours with this, with the grant.
And I, being on the board is, for the years I've been on, every year we. Champion a little bit more, you know, activity buckets, and I don't, I don't mind that, I mean, I appreciate the work that goes into it, and it is a very involved. Policy, and that's fine, but I wanna hear people champion.
That a minor change has in minutes of the day.
The twenty minutes a day over the course of the third, of the ten years that the students are here. Almost equals a year of instructional time, it's a, it's a very interesting one, I'm saying. And quite frankly, when we implemented with uh not having the activity. The teachers and everybody were very excited, because we gained some instructional time, and then we wound up having to give it up.
We are very well instructional, because this is cool.
Getting outside, like, just as important.
What?
Fresh air, it's good for us, even in the rain, I think the kids should be out all weather.
It was for Friday, but, you know.
So we live in the forest, you know, the Pacha Forest is part of our town. I mean, do you think it gives us something else, so interesting else to come from, which is that lots of, how do you maintain balance between along with instructional time? And physical activity, and is there, are there changes that we would want to consider?
No.
To sacrifice one for enough.
Yeah.
Right, so I think that's a, that's a different conversation that maybe the board should also.
Well, we we can review each one of these issues and. And see, you know, if there's an approach, and we did spend quite a lot of time with this. But the big thing was in negotiations. We got a significant increase in instructional time, and we were so happy about that. And then we had to change the whole middle school schedule around.
One thing I would also like to throw out, that we consider adding, there was someone on the, I think, six one four to. Um one oh one B, when we were in sense, it talks about uh. Modify some special dietary students, and then modify meals for students like with disabilities and special dietary needs. I'd like this to mention that um those students will not be. Like made to sit at a table separate from others. They will not be like segregated from, like if you think of a student that has a peanut, uh or you write to be made to sit at a separate table. I'd like to see something incorporated that there about that.
Did he say anything about where they send?
It talks about that students will be, like the one from climate on the other page. About that they'll have adequate space with a supervision and access to hand washing facilities. But it doesn't talk anything about students with diet specific dietary needs not being segregated from their peers.
When they have to be.
Well, I mean, I think that would be part of an I E P or five oh four, that's a difference from this policy, this policy is like. I think about ninety five percent students, right? I I think what Megan's suggesting is, in some school, they've set up like the peanut free table. And, and I think her recommendation would be to set up the peanut table, right, so if you bring peanut butter and jelly. You go sit at that table, so that the child who had the allergy is not the one who's segregated every day from their peers, but rather the people who are choosing. See, because you choose to bring a peanut butter and jelly, if you wanna sit with your friends, you can bring, yeah, so. I and I don't even know if we have tables, but I would like the policy to reflect that students with dietary needs and. Um disability related needs are not, not segregated, of course. It's different if it's a five oh four I E P requirement or something, this is just for the general cafeteria population, I like.
Okay, noted, we'll move on to um, if there's any more additions for that. We'll see if that fits in this one or or different, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, with the lunch requirement and talking about the dietary requirement, it kind of feels like it makes sense right there. One bullet kind of thing, under the, maybe even under that lunch room. Letter we happen to see, we in that lunch requirement, like we can, we can add it there, or we had it on B where it talks about. Bring a traditional, I think it makes sense in there.
Great, thank you for. Your input, um. We'll move on to item number five, new business boards now.
Um, you you want us to, you know, to.
Oh, you, we need to. Good, no, to discuss anything specific.
Motion versus.
Okay. Well, I'm going to have a motion to appoint Caitlin Stockford as a one on one tutor.
You should.
On paper, I'm. Discussion. Motion passes to appoint Caitlin Stockford as a one on one tutor, thank you Caitlin. Um. With the motion, um. With great regret to accept the letter from Penny Germany, um. Long term. Um, how many years is it? Forty years, oh my goodness. Uh forty years of service as a. Teacher in many grades, but is announcing for retirement, so um. Or would express our fierce thanks and appreciation for your service to the all on top. Motion. With regret, with regret. On paper.
With big, big, big.
Four years.
Right, and all of them in us to fund the next chapter. Very much.
All the youngsters who started developing, and the kindergarten.
And uh, there's another motion, uh this just came in. Uh Lauren Laura, uh Lauren Rodriguez will take a month uh. Uh leave to uh help support the family issue. And I just wanted to have that entered into the minutes, so it was documented. Okay, good, we just leave it that, but I.
You don't have to share, I don't know what the requirements of sharing. Is it an F M L A lead?
Um, I was gonna wait to.
That's it, the personnel.
Yeah, that's it, the personnel, okay.
And then um. The twenty four, twenty five. Yeah.
I I'm not sure, I wanna take a motion on that, just yet to, because we've had to change it and just if there's any reviews. Let it sit for another month, if there's anything that comes up with some changes or other things, because.
Uh. Which will, I just. I think we just got learned, right?
Yeah, it's right here.
Yeah. That's good.
Uh, we'll, we'll take a look and see, we just got an invoice for next year.
I don't think we have it.
No.
Oh, see, uh they they still things coming in. We wind up including the calendar, then we wind up having to keep on adjusting it, so uh we can wait a little bit. For the.
Yeah.
Do you remember? So you just mark the day. Is that a location, it's just not on this schedule.
Yeah. Selection, yeah.
Did you pick up something?
It's just, it's just like super minor, just to list.
Yeah, well, you should, we should, uh, we should, uh. Calendar for next, next time, uh. Make color copies that will pass it out of the meeting, because it's, it's easier to read it. Looking at that, uh, you know, we need some more color.
I always love looking at that, because it's always. I think about vacation planning, like, yeah.
Okay.
Gotta be a debris day at least. The last item on your business, the capital.
No, I thought we had something that we needed to approve, I just put it in at the end, but uh. We we're working on it, uh, the, this, the sequence, you may be seeing some advertisements for the. ATR system or other things, but uh, maybe next meeting, uh, we'll we'll have a decision on that. I think that's it, and uh, I don't, oh, uh. Well, I don't think this needs to be discussed in the executive session, uh. Dan Murphy is our new attorney, and we have, you know, some negotiations coming up, and. Fred has traditionally come in and done a workshop with the board, and uh, you know, it might be good to have. A board workshop at some time, and I I wrote to him today saying, maybe uh fourth Tuesday. You know, one of our alternate meetings this spring, so I sent him the dates. But the question to the board, and Kay, you know, I think you agree is, would you like to meet with Dan? And if we meet with him, then we can talk about some of the priorities that he has, questions and answers. He has some things that he'd like to mention to the board, and maybe we can, you know, just get a little uh jumpstart on some of the priorities for next year. Uh, I would have to speak with Dan to get a, you know, to get a, you know, an idea. And then uh, we're we're fortunate, I left the funding for the budget up on the, up on the board. We still are gonna get our two million one hundred seventeen thousand, whatever it is. So that's stable, so we don't have to worry about that, but I will say there are some budget increases. That we're gonna have to really, very carefully, okay, and we got into some of them today. Well, but uh, anyway, that's, that's it.
Okay, thanks.
Go executive session.
Alright, our regular meeting um is the eleventh, I'm sure it's on the calendar, but that's. Illegally for me, but. Proper Thursday. Right here, same time, same place, um. And then, there's nothing really. Uh of note.
Yeah.
Nothing. Thank you all for an efficient meeting, and we'll take as our last um adjournment motion.
Motion, second.
On paper, aye, not opposed, much.
Yeah, very precious.
Sure, additional this, this will be trusted.